Sounds like.
Hmm?
It sounded like Tom's mic is picking him up there and it doesn't show its on.
No, it's not.
Maybe he's just that loud.
Call to order the meeting of the Williams County Board of Commissioners. This is our March thirteenth meeting. We'll open the session. This time, we'll begin by having our invocation that will be led by Commissioner Ricky Jones. Commissioner Joe Hughes will lead us in our pledge to the flag. If you would, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the blessings that you have given us, dear Lord. We ask that you be with us as we go into our commission meeting tonight, be with us as commissioners as we do our county's business and our government's business. At this time, we ask that you be with the Ronald Sharp family who has suffered a loss this past week and comfort them and be with them. We also ask that you be with the Hewlett family as they look forward to their new arrival this week and bless them. And we ask that you be with each of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. Somebody's sitting up here with me said, "Guess what the next announcement is." We have Lynn Sutton, who serves as our Sergeant at Arms here tonight. This is the legislative meeting of the Williams County Commission. And I'll ask each of you, if you have a pager or telephone in your pocket, turn it off. And if it goes off, Commissioner, Mr. Sutton, if you'd take care of that, please. So help us by keeping this, the meeting that we want it to be, and honor that request, if you would, please. Ms. Anderson, if you would, please recall the roll. If you're here, press your yes button or your present button so that we can have a roll call vote, a roll call at this time, please.
Twenty-two present, two absent. Commissioner McCord absent and Commissioner Mary Mills.
Commissioner McCord is absent and also Commissioner Mills. So of twenty-two present this evening for business. Approval of the minutes of the regular February thirteenth, two thousand and six county commission meeting. Copies were mailed to each of, each of you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt these. Motion by Commissioner Hayes, seconded by Commissioner Walton. Commissioner Moon.
I'd like to amend the minutes. At our last meeting, we had a substantial discussion with the school in Parks and Rec. And we discussed the necessity of obtaining bids before construction was to begin. And that matter was affirmatively received. It inadvertently was left off the minutes and I'd request that it be put in.
Okay. You clear on that, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Thank you, Commissioner Moon.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to amend those minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So if we will amend those minutes. All, all in favor then with the minutes with this addition and correction made, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Adoption of the minutes as amended with Commissioner Moon's comments on the school. Introduction and acceptance of highway commission minutes. These also were mailed to each member of the county commission. I'll entertain a motion. We accept these. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Cook, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Citizens' communication. There are no signups for the communicating with us from citizens this evening. Communications and messages. We've got proclamations here this evening and this time I'll recognize Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first proclamation that we have, and if I wouldn't, Mr. Chairman, if you would step down from behind the mic and join me as we acknowledge the, this National Telecommunication Week, and I'll ask Bill Jorgensen, I saw him out in the audience also. As they're coming down, many of you know that we do not have a meeting in April. And so this proclamation is somewhat premature, but at the same time, it is a proclamation that is so deserving. And Houston, if you would read it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Rogers. This is a proclamation that comes to us to honor some folks in our community. I serve on the E-911 Board of Directors and honored to bring this to you. Whereas everyday public safety call takers and dispatchers throughout Williamson County and the nation answer requests for emergency aid from the public with professionalism and compassion. And whereas the efforts of these unseen first responders to answer calls for help, gather essential information, and assure that appropriate assistance is provided has saved innumerable lives. And whereas to the work of these public safety telecommunicators is invaluable and deserves public recognition and appreciation. And whereas in order to recognize the high-quality communication services provided by the emergency telecommunicators in the United States, Congress designated the second week of April as National Telecommunicator Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rogers Anderson, as county mayor of Williamson County, hereby honors and commends Williamson County Public Safety Telecommunicators for their professionalism, commitment, compassion, and steadfast pursuit of their goal of protecting life and property. And be it further resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this thirteenth day of March, two thousand and six, urges its fellow citizens to observe National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and pay tribute to these men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe and join our county mayor, Rogers Anderson, and commission chairman, Houston Naren, as they proclaim the week of April nine through fifteen as Telecommunicator Week in Williamson County. And this has been signed by Rogers and myself. So we'd like to present this to Bill Jorgensen, who runs our communications center. Bill, congratulations.
It's hard to follow that up, but I do have a couple of things I would like to say. I'd like to thank Mayor Anderson, Chairman Naren, and the commission for proclaiming this week as Telecommunicator Week in Williamson County in the second week of April. I'd also like to thank the Williamson County Emergency Communications District. You usually don't hear much about them, but it's led by Ken Bryson, who he knows as Mayor in Fairview. And I appreciate their continued support in supporting emergency communications in Williamson County. But it really comes down to one thing, and that is the people that are really working every day down in the basement, answering 911. And they are really the first link that the public has to the public safety response system. And without those people there, the public safety response system would fail. And I just want to publicly thank all the telecommunicators in Williamson County for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me to ask Commissioner Judy Hayes to step down. You know, when you think about keeping Williamson beautiful, it kind of goes hand in hand, synonymous with, with Judy. And at the same time, I'd like to ask Joanne, Dawn, and Carolyn to come up also so that we can all get, get this. And I'll ask Judy to read this one, if you do not mind.
Whereas Keep Williamson Beautiful's mission is to partner with volunteers to keep our community clean, green, and environmentally aware. And whereas Keep Williamson Beautiful is celebrating its fifth anniversary and participation as an affiliate in Keep America Beautiful's Great American Cleanup, which takes place, which takes place from March one through May thirty-first each year. And whereas teams of volunteers will be cleaning areas of their choice, including parks, parking lots, shopping districts, neighborhoods, riverbanks, schoolyards, and campuses across Williamson County during our Great American Cleanup. And whereas the Great American Cleanup is a platform for the wide range of initiatives embraced by Keep America Beautiful's mission, such as litter cleanups, litter prevention, education, recycling drives, graffiti removal, beautification, and community involvement, all types of projects, park renewals, clothing collections, and water and stream cleanups. And whereas the caring citizen volunteers of Williamson County, Tennessee, are committed and proud to do their part to sustain and improve the quality of life in Williamson County, Tennessee. Working together to clean and beautify our county helps build pride in communities, create cleaner environments, foster economic development, and change the behavior that causes litter. And whereas I do hereby ask that all citizens, and from businesses, civic groups, government agencies, churches, schools, and all other organizations within our community to work together to improve and enhance the quality of life in Williamson County, not only during Keep America Beautiful, Great American Cleanup, but throughout the entire year. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Roger, I, Rogers Anderson, as county mayor of Williamson County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April the twenty-second, two thousand and six, as Williamson County's Great American Cleanup throughout the county and encourage all Williamson County's, Canyons, to recognize the many contributions of a clean and beautiful county to an improved quality of life. Rogers has signed it and I have signed it. And we'd like to present this to our Keep Williamson Beautiful, Dawn, and our Joanne Jackson, and, and Carolyn Gallagher. And they would probably like to tell you about a special program that is going on in April the twenty-second for Great American Cleanup Day. So which of you is going to tell that?
I'm sure they're not. It's your order.
Let me present that to you. We're very proud of your program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All of you have a little reminder sheet on your desk. And if you don't, just see me and we'll make sure that you do. This gives you an opportunity to get out and meet and greet. It's going to be on Earth Day. There are numerous reasons why you should be getting out and meeting and greeting this time of the year, the least of which is picking up litter, maybe, that would be a prevalent thought. But it's out there. We need to join hands. There are several opportunities for you to get involved in the schools and our environmental reading program, as well as assist us at our community county convenience centers on Earth Day while we dispense bags and get the entire community involved in cleaning up the litter that has gathered over the winter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, the next two proclamations are really for appreciation of service kind of beyond the call of duty. And I'll ask Doug Hood, Mr. Chairman, if you would not object to come up and acknowledge the first one is Mr. Jason Wiggers. And I know his family's here, if they would, if they would come up. Doug, I'm going to let you read this. There's two of these. And this is, this, as he's coming up, this can only be accomplished through your funding efforts and proper training that the Parks and Rec. But, you know, quite often there are people that come beyond the call of duty. And I want to tell both of these people, thank you.
Mr. Hood?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation of appreciation presented to Jason Wiggers. Whereas Jason Wiggers joined the Williamson County Parks and Recreation Staff in September of two thousand and four as an assistant pool manager for Williamson County. And whereas Jason successfully completed American Red Cross instructor training and is a certified instructor with the Automated External Defibrillator, AED, skills. And whereas on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and five, Jason was called by facility staff to come to the aid of a patron who had collapsed while playing racquetball at the recreation complex in Franklin. And whereas upon his arrival on the scene, another patron was administering CPR while Jason called for the use of an onsite AED. And whereas Jason utilized the equipment to shock the patron's breathing pattern back to normal. And as, whereas as a result of his actions, emergency personnel have credited Jason with administering lifesaving measures to this patron. Now therefore be it resolved that Rogers Anderson, as county mayor of Williamson County, Tennessee, along with the Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this thirteenth day of March, two thousand and six, hereby express our appreciation to Mr. Jason Wiggers for maintaining a calm, compassionate, and professional demeanor while effectively administering assistance, which ultimately resulted in saving the life of a fellow citizen. And witness whereof, Mayor Anderson have heretofore set his hand and caused the great seal of the county of Williamson to be affixed at Franklin this thirteenth day of March, two thousand and six. And it's signed Roger C. Anderson, County Mayor, Williamson County. Jason, congratulations.
Mayor, would you introduce Jason and his family?
I'm going to let Jason do that. He looks like he's just dying to talk.
Come on, Jason. Come on, Jason.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll hang on one second. We can do Frank and then we'll have them both appear at the same time so we can say something about them. That'd be okay?
Okay, that'd be fine.
I know this is very hard on those two guys. They're very humble people, but we really appreciate it. Frank, if you and your wife and two lovely children would come up, I'm going to ask Mr. Hood to read this proclamation of appreciation also.
Bring them on up. Come on up, kids.
Believe it, most of us have had small children and they're a lot better than teenagers.
Proclamation of appreciation presented to Frank Hubbuck. Whereas Frank Hubbuck joined the Williamson County Parks and Recreation Staff ten years ago as a summer intern, later assumed the position of pool supervisor, and currently serves as the aquatics coordinator at the indoor sports complex for Williamson County. And whereas Frank has received American Red Cross instructor training and is a certified instructor, trainer with CPR and Automated External Defibrillator, AED, skills. And whereas on February fourteenth, two thousand and six, Frank was called by staff members to come to the aid of a patron who had collapsed while exercising at the indoor sports complex. And whereas Frank administered first aid in an expedient, calm, and professional manner, including the use of an onsite AED while emergency personnel were called to the scene. And whereas as a result of his actions, emergency personnel have credited Frank with administering lifesaving assistance to this patron. Now therefore be it resolved that Rogers Anderson, as county mayor of Williamson County, Tennessee, that the Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this thirteenth day of March, two thousand and six, hereby join me in expressing our appreciation to Mr. Frank Hubbuck for effectively administering lifesaving skills while maintaining a calm, compassionate, and professional manner. And witness whereof, the mayor heretofore set his hand and caused the great seal of the county of Williamson to be affixed at Franklin this thirteenth day of March, two thousand and six. It's signed Roger C. Anderson, County Mayor, Williamson County. Congratulations, Frank. Let me say something about both these gentlemen. As you can tell by looking on their face, they are, they don't care for this. And they have, they have did everything they could to not come here to do this because these are two professionals who have just done their job. And I, as, as the director for your Parks and Recreation Park, want to thank you for funding these AEDs because there are two families in Williamson County are forever grateful for what you all have done because these two, I mean, saved these gentlemen's lives. And there's nothing that is more important than that than to be with your family. And I know that Frank's family is proud of him as well as Jason's is. And you can tell our staff, there are some division heads and assistants here. And Scott, would you stand up? This is Scott Moore. Scott trained these gentlemen. Scott is in charge of facilities and aquatics and has trained these young gentlemen and then, you know, all their other department, division heads and assistants who've come because they're so proud of these people and what they've done. And again, I thank you for that. And I want to introduce, I'm going to let Frank and Jason both say something. And I promise you, it'll be brief because they don't care much for this. Jason, you'll come up and introduce your mom and dad.
This is my mom, Darlene, and my dad, Tom. And thank you. You're probably going to get the same thing. It's my wife, Katie, and my son and daughter, Grayson and Hannah. And again, just thank you for allowing us to have these in our facilities. And I want to publicly thank Jason for doing an excellent job. My staff that helped us during all the ordeals, I can't ask enough. They're, they're a great group, a bunch of people to work for. And, and thank you, Mr. Hood, for letting me do what I do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing them. I appreciate it.
Let me, let me say while they're going back to the seats, this all goes back to Commissioner Hayes. If you remember, we had a fatality over in College Grove. And this is what started your thinking about the process and started bringing it to our attention. I know you discussed it with Mr. Hood, but I want to thank especially too, there are two other folks that were very instrumental in helping fund this. The commission, of course, made these funds available, but Commissioner Steve Smith, working with the hospital and the hospital foundation, I know Steve was very instrumental in making sure that money came. And also Dennis Miller, our hospital administrator. Dennis, thank you for your support to make this possible because this is exactly what was supposed to happen as we move this forward. So it's a great, great project. Any more proclamations, Mayor? Is that it? All right. Getting on to the business, we have four late filed resolutions this evening, and we need to go through those. Three of them were on the agenda and were sent out in the packet. You've been given one tonight. So the, the first one is resolution, that's a late file resolution, is three oh six fifteen. This is a solid waste. Resolution three oh six fifteen was in the packet that went out. Is any objection to hearing one, excuse me, three oh six fifteen this evening? Any objection? I see none. So we'll add that to the agenda. We have a highway resolution, three oh six sixteen, late file resolution. Any objection to hearing that resolution this evening? I see no objection. We'll add that after fifteen. Number sixteen is seventeen. Resolution three oh six seventeen is an election commission late file resolution. Any objection to hearing that this evening? See no objection. We'll add that. And then finally, there's a library resolution, three oh six eighteen, that should be laying at your place this evening. Any objection to hearing that resolution this evening as well? I see no objection, so we'll add fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen under the appropriations resolutions in that order. If you haven't already noticed, the commission has purchased new chairs. They're very comfortable. Don't get too comfortable because they will flip you out, but they're very much adjustable up and down. And so if you need any help with that, we'll work on that. I want to thank especially Leslie Mitchell. Leslie worked very hard to make this happen with David Coleman and looking at all the chairs and doing the bidding process. So we certainly thank them for making your business here just a little bit more comfortable. Report of county offices. We'll move on to first, county mayor, Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could have Mr. Coleman come up and give you the broad-based financials and answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners have three items tonight, kind of our usual report. One of those is the monthly budget report. We're through seven months now, January the thirty-first. Everything appears to be in order there, tracking along as we would expect. Second item that we normally put in your packet is the privileged tax collections. This is for the month of February. And I'm sorry, I had not done the history on this, but in looking at the monthly collections, if you'll just go across the schools, nine hundred twenty-seven thousand. Recreation, almost eighty-five thousand. Our fire protection, about twenty-seven hundred. And highways, over twenty-seven thousand. That's over a million dollars in one month in privileged tax collected. If that's not a record, it's very close. Then the third item we have tonight, again, we've been having very good reports on our conference center, and we have the report this month for January of almost forty-five thousand dollars received from the conference center. Any questions, Mr. Chairman? I'll try to answer those.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, David. Mayor?
Three items, I'll just bring you up to speed on there. Two of them. First one is the indoor soccer at Brentwood. If you've driven by that location, you will notice that there have laid some gravel out there for the trucks to get in and out. And just as soon as the weather lets it up a little bit, they should be over there getting the facility on track. The other location is the Spring Hill Recreation Center. I know many of you are interested in that. Spring Hill's approved it. You all have approved it. We're just dotting the i's and crossing the t's so that we can get started on that. I don't want you to think that that will be open by this fall. It's going to take a little time, but somewhere in the neighborhood, Mr. Hood indicates that probably about eighteen months to somewhere in that line for the time we actually start pushing, pushing dirt. And I'm not tying his feet down, but the time we do the, we're taking bids in as we, this week and looking at those. The third project is recycling in Brentwood on Wilson Pike. I'm just talking with Louis Bumpus, and Louis indicates to me that we've had some real issues that we've had to address up there, but through the, through the state of Tennessee, Brentwood City, in the county, we think that we're within just an arm's distance of finally being able to work on that site and work out the issues that are up there and bring something to Brentwood that is extremely, is needed very, very much to address that issue up in, up in the Brentwood area. Mr. Chairman, that's the essence of my report tonight.
Mr. Mayor, as this meeting will occur before we meet again, would you announce the Grassland Sewer Public Hearing date and time again?
Yeah. It is April fourth at six o'clock. April fourth at six o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those in the eighth and ninth district and even trickling down to the tenth district, we'll be having a meeting at the Franklin Recreation Center to discuss and lay out our, where we are in our sewer issues up in the Grassland area. As many of you know about... As many of you know, about a year and a half or so ago, you all approved one point seven million dollars for a major trunk line to go up there and serve approximately four hundred homes that were experiencing some septic sewer issues. And we've, we are at the point now that at the last county commission meeting, immediately following that, within the week, we started sending out letters to the homeowners up there indicating we needed some right of ways. We have had a lot of discussion with those people up there and they're very excited about it so that we can get started up there. This project has taken us a little longer than what we'd like to admit, but we did have to go through some streams and go across some major highways and like anything that's laid out there, it didn't go as smooth as we'd like for it to. But we're on, we're on the trail now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hancock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, we spoke earlier today and we spoke several other times, but there's an ongoing issue in the second district, as everyone here I think is familiar with, the city of Franklin did some major annexation in that area a number of months back, in the Goose Creek area. There's a major trunk sewer line being laid out there now. I've been getting ready to lay it, put it in. And it goes through common ground of some of the area that they didn't annex. And I know you've looked into this a little bit and I think I have a request to be made later, but I just want to throw it out as a question to you. Is there any impact that we can have on that, any way we can negotiate something that will clear the air a little bit, let these citizens know exactly what they can expect and maybe even create a model? Because this is not the last time something like this is gonna happen and those folks out there are scared to death. They're talking about a thirty-foot trench that's gonna be dug real close to some of them's home and blasting and all the other stuff.
Mr. Chairman, if I can address that, I know Ms. Hester has also called me today and they've each called me several times over the last week. For you that aren't familiar with the project, it's, it's, it's going through red, red wing subdivision and that subdivision is in the county. And the city, of course, is running the sewer to, to the far end of that. As I've talked to legal counsel today, and I would like Jeff, if he would, to touch on what are our options as far as legal issues, but clearly this subdivision will, will remain in the county for the time being. And clearly the, the trench that is, that Mr. Hancock and Ms. Hester are pointed out is clearly going through some folks' backyards, got some real questions in terms about trees and the normal things that go on in anything, anytime you do some massive program like this without the benefit of enjoying the advantage of being, of being able to tie on to the sewer. So I've asked Jeff, I talked to Jeff shortly after lunch today and asked him to kind of do a quick synopsis on, on what our options are. And if you would allow me, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for Jeff to speak for Mayor.
Counsel.
Be relatively short as well. As, as the county itself, we have very few options in terms of legally intervening. Of course, as a political subdivision, the city does have the right to acquire land for the needs of their sewer system and going to that property. And most of the legal rights flow to the individuals that the property is being taken from. So in that respect, the county intervening in the process, we're fairly limited in our abilities to do that. We may have the options to open discussions with the city of Franklin to discuss either assistance or some type of cooperative effort, both in education and in retrofitting or putting that property back the way it should be. Those are things that we might be able to do, but that's really more on the political side than the legal side.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we give unanimous consent to our mayor to pursue this with the mayor and other folks in Franklin. This is not the last time this is gonna happen, folks. We need a model. We need something for those citizens that's left in the county that, to, to have at least input into how these things are done. And I don't want to beat this to death, I just, I just want them to look into it, but I do want to say this, although I don't think there's any condemnation that's going to occur in this particular event. If it were to occur, that sewer is going to a undeveloped piece of property. There's going to be millions and millions and millions of dollars made in that, that quadrant right there, those four corners of Goose Creek. It's not a bit of difference in that than going to downtown Nashville and taking his property so that you can build a building on it. Not a bit of difference. Now, I know all the legalities of it's different and the way you look at it's different, but that's what's happening. And I ask for unanimous consent, Rogers.
Commissioner Hancock, if you would, let me let Commissioner Hester speak, I'm sure to the same subject, and then I'll come back to you for definition of what you'd like us to do. Commissioner Hester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just also wanted to express my concern for my constituents who live in this area. They really need more consideration. They need more communication and they need assurances that their property will be protected as much as possible from this blasting. I would just respectfully ask for this. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Hancock, I'm gonna come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The issues surrounding this are much, much too complicated to get into tonight. There's all kind of ownership property situations. But I would like to empower our, our county mayor to meet with his counterparts at the city and see if there is any common ground that we can get understanding and do what's right. Now, I'm not talking about what's legal to roll over a group of people. I'm talking about what's right. Let's walk it like we talk it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If that's a motion, I second it.
I think it was a motion.
It was.
Seconded by Commissioner Lynch. Discussion, let's see, let's move over to Commissioner Williams.
I fully support what Mr. Hancock has just said and seconded by Mr. Lynch. In the Grassland community, I can see that fully happening in itself. We back, the Grassland community backs up to Brentwood and Franklin. And we could be in exactly the same situation that that subdivision is out there and we would bid their mercy. So I totally endorse that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Moon.
I have a question. Can the town, town of Franklin condemn property in Williamson County for purposes of running a sewer front line? I can.
Yes.
I'm also reminded, Commissioner Hancock, I think there was a recent Supreme Court case that said municipality may not condemn property for the advantage of a developer to, to redevelop. I don't know if that has any bearing on this or not.
I, I think that case actually went the other way and said that they could in fact condemn for economic development purposes.
I like it better when they can't.
Anything else, Commissioner Moon?
No.
Commissioner Brockman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did, did the residents request that Franklin look at annexing their property and providing sewer? Was that something that they had considered, something that they would want?
Again, to interpret what Franklin's reaction to that would be or what the property owners' reaction would be, I think primarily the property owners for years and I, I yield to my co-commission.
And it's in their growth boundary?
It is in the urban growth boundary.
It's in the urban growth boundaries, but basically the property owners want to be left alone if they can be, you know, and that's, that's pretty common out there in all areas.
Okay. All of you've heard the motion. The motion is to empower our mayor to meet with the city of Franklin to discuss this issue. You've heard a discussion, that's your motion and second. Discussion has occurred on this. All in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Hancock, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman and John and Bethy, I'll get some letter out in the next couple of days and then set up an appointment and see what we can do. It would be helpful if you all could do a little straw poll out there. One of the questions that Commissioner Brockman brought up, I'm sure that question's gonna come up, that they want sewer or they may not.
I did one the other day, I just went to a barn barn.
I understand, I understand. But, and, 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 Mr. Chairman, if I could, Ernie's comments were right on target. I think as we go on down the road, I think many of you know here that within the next twelve months, public chapter eleven oh one will probably be the single biggest item that we're gonna see in our county. This is not a political statement, this is a fact of life. You know, the first time we did this several years, several months ago, a lot of us didn't understand all the ramifications of it as a new law. Clearly, every city and every county that's in the rapid growth mode, there's Williamson County and some of the surrounding counties are, understand the implications of public chapter eleven oh one. And I would suspect that the next time we have these meetings of all the city and the county, and many of you were involved in, in those meetings, it would be very tedious and very well attended. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think Commissioner Green got his master's degree in eleven oh one. Any other questions of the, Commissioner Hayes?
I just wanted to make a comment. Christie came to the Thompson Station meeting at Commissioner Lynch and my request at the public meeting explaining the chapter eleven oh one, did a superb job and I want to publicly thank her. She really did put it down to where everybody could understand it. And for those that may have some people who don't understand it, it, it is a very involved issue. And before a lot of misgivings and misinformation get out there, it's going to be good to get the facts. And Christie certainly did a superb job.
Probably would be helpful, Mr. Chairman, if I could, to follow up on the heels of what Judy said. There's a website with CTAST. If we could get Diane to send out a letter or give you all that website that you can go on and brush up on your skills. There's a full section, if I remember correctly, isn't that right? Christie, on the Tasher website? Excuse me, the Tasher website. And we'll get that information out to you and for those that would like copies, we'll make you some copies. But it is a full section and it, and it will be coming.
Thank you. Any other questions of the mayor? I see none. Thank you.
That we went to, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. W, Williamson County School Director, Dr. Rebecca Sharber.
Good evening. I have a few things to report to you this evening, but I wanted to start with one that's related to a resolution we have before you this evening, and that is the resolution on emergency repair funds for Lipscomb Elementary School. We were asked to do some research into blasting that is happening over by the new rec center in Brentwood to see if that had any effect on the emergency repair work that we're having to do at Lipscomb. And I just wanted to report to you what we have done so far. We don't have any total conclusions at this point, but this is what we've done so far. Mr. Spong, our maintenance director, has contacted, has notified Wayne Franklin, our risk manager of our concerns about Lipscomb Elementary School and the possible involvement in this blasting. And he had already notified VCE Technical Services about concerns about the Brentwood rec center as well. So we notified VCE Technical Services by phone and requested a site survey of the school. And if you want any more information about that, Mr. Spong is present, he can certainly come up and, and visit with you about that. He has also spoken with Mr. Bill Rogers of Civil Constructors who indicated that the blasting on this site began in mid to late August. The foundation settlement and wall cracks at Lipscomb were actually noticed in early August. So those timelines don't exactly coordinate for the blasting to have caused the issues at Lipscomb, but we will still continue to look into it. And he also indicated that seismic measuring devices positioned at the rec center and other neighboring properties did not ever register above the point one five inches per second. The state requirement is it not to exceed two inches per second. So there, they don't think that the blasting hurt the school, but we are still in contact and we still will pursue whether or not it did. So I just did want to report that because people in the different committees looking at this were wondering about that possible effect. So we don't have any conclusive evidence really, one way or the other, except the timing of the two issues don't seem to coordinate very well together. We are moving forward with the plans for the new elementary schools. We are still working to finalize that contract for these land in Spring Hill, but the land will be ours, we just have to get the contract finalized. And we still are looking for property in Nolansville, but I think that is getting closer. I know I said that last month, but I really feel much more confident about it this month, but we don't have a contract on that land yet either. We are moving forward the plans for the, the construction extensions at Heritage Middle School and Winstead Elementary School. I will say that the fire marshal requirements as well as the codes requirements of all the planning commissions in our county continue to get more and more restrictive and continue to delay projects such as ours that need to be accomplished in an extremely timely manner. So we will be making contingency plans in case those two wings are not available when school starts, but we still hope they will be. But we are concerned about the, I guess, lack of cooperation might even be the statement I would make with the codes people and with the state fire marshal in trying to get buildings completed in a timely manner for Williamson County and the growth we're experiencing. And if you want to see why the privilege tax is so much greater, I would suggest a drive to Spring Hill because there are buildings everywhere that weren't there last week. It's making it, I know, difficult for you guys and your departments in terms of keeping up with that. It's making it extremely difficult for our department to keep up with it. On a lighter note, I just wanted to bring to you some dates for the ending of school. You won't meet again until May, so I didn't want you to miss these particular dates and it's just really hard for me to believe that I'm going to be telling you about graduation. But we have established our graduation dates for all of our high schools and I will be putting these in the FYI that I put out almost weekly so that you can have these on paper so you won't necessarily have to remember these or write these down unless you want to. But we do have two graduations on Friday, May twenty-sixth, that's Fairview High and Page High School. Then on Saturday, May twenty-seventh, we have three graduations, Centennial High School, Middle College High and Ravenwood High. And then Sunday, May twenty-eighth, we have Brentwood High and Franklin High School. Again, I will put those dates in an FYI probably two or three times so you can have them in writing. And of course, you're always welcome to attend any or all of our graduations. They're, they're nice ceremonies. March twenty-seventh through the thirty-first is spring break for Williamson County schools. Students will also not be in school on March twenty-fourth. That is a staff development parent conference day at the schools. So students will actually be out from the twenty-fourth through the thirty-first in that following weekend. Our offices will be open most of that time, but we will be closed on the Thursday and Friday, March thirtieth and thirty-first. And just to let parents know, get ready for TCAP testing, it will be coming in mid, mid to end of April. So get those students rested up over spring break and be ready for TCAP testing in mid-April. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Status of mid, middle college, high school?
Oh, thank you. We will have middle college students ready to occupy their new quarters on the old BGA campus when they return from spring break, April the third. So it's going very well. Thank you for asking about that.
Commissioner Forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to mention to the rest of the Commissioners, while Dr. Sharber is up here, we received a letter from Dr. Sharber asking that we look at the potential of moving the central office of the school system onto the Academy Park location. We'll begin discussions on that at the property committee and Dr. Sharber will be there on March twenty-ninth. And I would encourage all Commissioners who have an interest to come and join us at the property committee meeting that night. And I would encourage all commissioners who have an interest to come and join us at the Property Committee meeting that night.
Thank you, sir. Other questions of Dr. Sharber? I see none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dennis Miller?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Might I be brief? I believe you've had our packet sent to you. About the only thing I have to report is we're full, and we're hoping to get the two floors back online by August 1st. They're thinking they can move them up, so we'll have those additional floors opening beds, and we truly need them just about every day. We're looking for beds. If there's any questions, I may be able to answer for anybody.
Questions of Mr. Miller? I see none. Thank you, sir. Any other committee of the county commission wishing to make a report at this time? I see none. Whoops, excuse me, Commissioner Schmitt?
Chairman and Commissioners, you had in your, laying on your desk this evening, at our committee meeting for the Parks and Recreation Committee on March the 7th, we agreed to change the meeting time to 3:30 PM till further notice.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Rec will be meeting at 3:30 PM, and that notice is here at your place consideration. Any other committee wishing to make any sort of report at this time? Commissioner Ford?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the sheriff had something he wanted to bring to us.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to bring to your attention, and probably more importantly than that, it's just a plea to the citizens of the county. With spring brings an influx of trash on our highways. And I noticed the proclamation earlier tonight. I did not realize that proclamation was coming when I had decided earlier today to make this statement to our citizens as well as to the commission. We've got a press release going out of our office tomorrow that we really hope the press will get on and help us out with this. We're gonna start a new litter campaign. It's our opinion at the sheriff's office that litter is absolutely getting out of control in our county. We picked up 322,000 pounds of trash off our highways last year using inmate labor. And as more trash gets on the highway, what I'm finding is that citizens thinks that the sheriff's office litter crews not doing their job. Sergeant Eddie Stevens, who leads our litter crew, does an outstanding job, and we're very fortunate to have a litter crew that works these inmates in this county. Many, many counties do not have that. So we wanted the citizens to be aware of that, but we're pleading with the citizens to help us in this effort. We're gonna become very aggressive with it over the next few months. As the lawn mowers begin to run, they're gonna be chopping this trash up, and it just gets spread out more. So we're gonna begin to issue citations and bring people into court and be very aggressive with this litter campaign. So we hope that people will kind of heed the warning and help us out with it. Thank you.
Any questions of Sheriff while he's here? We'll take advantage of his being here before. So any questions? Commissioner Wilson?
I would like to comment. Thank you so much for taking that initiative, Sheriff Headley. I think it's most important. I have had a call on, just this week, from some residents on Wilson Pike, and they wanted to express that the, there is a, of course, a landfill, well, an area over there for pickup and delivering of trash. And many of the construction workers, different ones that are passing through that area, coming from other counties to work, it just blows off. And I know you're seeing that more and more, and it is certainly a problem. I appreciate that you're taking that effort to do that, and the citizens, I know, will definitely, and you'll be out there watching.
Thank you. And we need citizens calling us when they see what you're describing.
Okay.
Because, as I said, we're gonna begin to issue citations, but it's very rare that someone's gonna throw a McDonald wrapper out on the windshield of a patrol car. That just doesn't happen very often. So we need citizens watching, and we need citizens calling us and letting us know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Well, my question was for the sheriff. It's okay, Sheriff. You're not gonna issue citations of people that mow the yard and have them blow trash out of the road, are you?
Uh, no.
Okay. Moving along to the elections and appointments. County Mayor, Emergency Communications District Board of Directors, four-year term expiring in March of 10. An at-large director, Mike Thompson. The recommendation is Mike Thompson is also an opening. Vonna High has moved out of the district, so Mayor Anderson is working to have a replacement for that spot. It's not ready for tonight. Will be back at our May meeting. So entertain a motion to accept the recognition. Motion by Commissioner Barnwell, second by Commissioner Cook to approve this nomination to the District Board of Directors of the E-911 Communication. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Williamson County Regional Planning Commission, expiration 310. Susan Fisher's terms expiring, nomination Susan Fisher. Motion by Commissioner Walton, second by Commissioner Moon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Bob Meadaw, expiration is currently expiring, and appointment to that effective to 310 is Bob Meadaw. Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Lynch II. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Board of Health, four-year terms expiring, 410. And all of these are replacements for the expiring term being replaced by the people that are there. Counsel, can we vote all these in one motion? C.A. Stillwell, appointed C.A. Stillwell, Joseph Willoughby, M.D., J. Gary Owen, DDS, William Garrett, pharmacist, Brendan McClanahan, RN, Dr. Charlie Beach, veterinarian. Commissioner Cook made the motion, the second. Commissioner Hayes, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. County Commission Appointments. This is our appointment to the Highway Commission. There are two, two-year terms expiring. In the Southwest District, Mr. Renis Baker, his term is expiring. This is to appoint Mr. Baker back to the Highway Commission. Motion by Commissioner Hancock, second by Commissioner Wilson, to approve Mr. Renis Baker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Southeast District, Charlie Bennett, nomination Charlie Bennett. Commissioner Lynch, Commissioner Hayes, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Adoption of the Highway Commission. Industrial Development Board, six-year term expiring, 312. Term expiring is David, was it? Doug Gottsch. And the nomination is Doug Gottsch. So nominated by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Hayes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous adoption. Zoning Appeals Board, five-year term expiring, March of 11. Term expiring, Ed Jaggers. Nomination, Ed Jaggers. Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second Commissioner Hester. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Adoption of Mr. Jaggers. The notaries, you have a list of those who have been presented, the new ones and the renewals. Will entertain a motion to accept the notaries as presented. Second, a motion is by Commissioner Hewlett, second Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Adoption. Consent Agenda, there's one item on the consent agenda. Will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as adopted, as presented. Commissioner Cook, second. Commissioner Walton. Discussion on the consent agenda. It's loaded on a machine. If you're in favor of the consent agenda as presented, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-two, yes. Consent Agenda is adopted. Moving on to new business. Under zoning, we do have a public hearing. So at this time, I will declare the public hearing open, public hearing regarding Resolution Number 306-1. Resolution to amend the Williamson County Regulations for Wastewater Treatment and Land Disposal Systems. If you wish to address the commission, if you would, please come to the mic, give us your name and address and your comments, and we'll entertain those at this time. Anyone wishing to address public hearing for Resolution 306-1? Anyone? Public hearing is closed, so we'll entertain Resolution Number 306-1. Resolution to amend the Williamson County Regulations for Wastewater Treatment and Land Disposal Systems. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Moon. Planning Commission, report, please.
Nine, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Wastewater Authority?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is changing our wastewater regulations. When there's a new subdivision in and they're gonna put in a sewage treatment plant, it requires that they have a buffer 300 feet from the edge of the property. In the past, they were able to build that right on the property line, which would affect the neighbors there. So now they've gotta have this buffer. Any further questions? I can defer to Mr. Horn.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I'm trying to make sure I understand. There's now gonna be a 300-foot buffer, or this eliminates 300-foot buffer?
No, there will be a 300-foot buffer.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I see none. Resolution?
If I might, there is one minor typo I would like to have corrected within this, if that's not a problem. Under Section 3B, under the last, in the last line, it reads in your copy, "proscribe," but should be "prescribe." We caught it the first time, but we did it the second time. Thank you.
Okay, under, on attachment 14-11, under 3B, it should read in that last line, "buffer yard in addition to the prescribed buffer zone." So please make that correction, Ms. Anderson. Other questions? Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand that the buffer is required for the facility itself. Is there any requirement in terms of the effluent field, or is that something that's not required to be buffered?
The affluent fields, Mr. Chairman, the affluent field, I'm sorry. The affluent fields have a very small buffer, but generally speaking, the affluent fields, if they are conducted correctly, tend to function as open space. This buffer will apply to essentially, in the case of a Schaefer system, a buffer for the lagoon, 300 feet, or in the case of what we have seen quite a few more of, which are the recirculating sand filters, 300 feet from the recirculating sand filter.
Thank you. Any other questions of Commissioner Walton on this resolution? I see none. Resolution 306-1 is up for adoption. If you in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Commissioner Barnwell? He's out.
He's out.
Court of vote, please.
Okay. Twenty-one, yes.
Twenty-one, yes. Resolution 306-1 adopted. Appropriations. Resolution Number 306-2. Resolution appropriating $24,881 additional state adult education funds for personnel and non-personnel expenditures for the adult education program. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second. School Board report is 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Committee voted four, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is a grant award that was higher than anticipated, and this is for additional equipment and material, and also for part-time educators for this program.
Questions of Commissioner Jones? I see none. Resolution 306-2 is up for consideration. If you in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 306-3. Resolution appropriating $92,000 for emergency repair at Lipscomb Elementary School from undesignated fund balance. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewlett, the second. School Board report, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
As we heard tonight, this is dealing with some issues where there's been some problems with foundations and also cracks that were found in two wings at Lipscomb Elementary.
And you've heard the director of schools report that all efforts are being made, it should be in the minutes, to pursue any potential damage that's there from the blasting. Any questions of Commissioner Jones on this resolution? See none. 306-3 is up for consideration. If you in favor, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number 3-064. Resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of Commissioners' approval of an intent to fund up to $2,254,714, which represents the 2005-6 Board of Education capital financing needs from their updated 2005-to-'10 capital outlay plan for athletic purposes. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Moon. School Board report, 12, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no, as amended.
Okay. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero, against.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, explanation, please.
Yes, this is a project that the School Board and maybe Parks and Rec and several county commissioners years ago had worked on to try to look at the athletic needs in our county, to see any discrepancies, and try to bring everybody up to speed. This is also the top three priorities that the School Board and this committee has looked into, and I think this is needs that all Williamson County schools and athletes, it would be, but benefit to all schools. And I strongly ask you to support this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Moon?
I'd ask the commissioners to support this. If you'll notice on the line items, there are 13 line items. Eleven of them go to Page High School. Page High School is a wonderful academic institution. The kids are making their TCAP grades are on a par with the rest of the county. There's no reason why the athletics facilities shouldn't be on a par with the rest of the county. We recently built an auditorium for them to bring them up to county standards. It's a shame that this has gone on so long, but now is an opportunity to rectify that, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, sir. Other comments on this resolution? And clerk, Madam Clerk, if you would make the correction on this heading of this resolution, should read Resolution Requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners' Approval, so that when this goes, if it goes to bond sale, that we're consistent with the top and the bottom, and so that we don't have to make a correction there. Other discussion on the resolution? Commissioner Williams?
What was the amendment?
I'll let the maker of the amendment, Mr. Davis, if you want to explain the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of discussion about how we fund capital projects, and many times we fund capital projects that are not capital projects. What the amendment was, was suggesting to the Budget Committee and to our administrative staff- staff that we not fund small, non-capital items by a twenty-year bond, that we find other ways, including the existing budget, to fund small items. It didn't actually amend the resolution itself.
Was that clarifying?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, $2 million is not a small item. What, it's hard for me to understand, there's one item on here, it's irrigation softball fields. The one I'm familiar with is over by the 25th of May. In twenty-five years, you won't see where you need any water on a softball field over one year out of twenty-five. Why would you irrigate a softball field?
Dr. Sharber? I see Mr. Fortney here. Kevin, you want to, let me pass that off to you.
I'll try to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Commissioner Lynch, in this process that they've been going through of identifying what needs to be done, what doesn't need, in various projects, the irrigation primarily of our football fields, which are warm-season grasses, we're using basically Quick Stand or Ford 19 Bermuda, and they are, although drought, somewhat drought tolerant, they do take some, you know, additional water to keep them going year-round. With regard to the baseball fields and softball fields, I will address those. All of our fields are getting used year-round now. With the amount of play that we're seeing through the schools and all through the various rec centers, we're getting a lot of wear on them. This was a recommendation by the committee. It was based on the staff going over the turfs that we've had to replace lately, and from recommendations from coaches, principals, and so forth, and we've just addressed that question that they had about irrigating those fields. Again, most of our softball fields are warm-weather grasses that we're starting to put in. I can tell you that, for example, Independence is a warm-weather grass that we've installed. Brentwood's the same way. I can't address Page. I can address Centennial is a warm-weather grass by that, I'm saying Bermuda turfs, and they are requiring some irrigation. It can be done other ways, if people want to drag hoses out and so forth, but we're trying to be proactive and not create a bunch of situations to where we're losing turf. As much use as we're getting out of these fields, whether they, again, I know the, like, spring ball for the high school students at Page High School and all the other high schools, especially girls' softball, it does end in early May. We are getting use of those fields at other times, through Little League, we're getting use of them through other community areas, and so this is why we've done that.
Well, the one I'm familiar with, and I'm not disputing your word, the others may be, and the baseball field is used, but the softball field wasn't used last year, except on Saturday or Sunday, you may see a father out there with one or two of his boys or girls, but the real field was never used after May. That's the reason why, I wonder why you would put anything after the first of May, when it's not used. Of course, it's kind of difficult to get a permit to use that particular field for some reason.
The ones that we're looking at right now, on the softball fields, field layout with backstop dugouts and fencing, looking at this note on the irrigation, we're looking at Cheek Park, and we're also looking at, I'm trying to remember what GWP is, bear with me, Granny White Park. Those fields and the irrigation on those is what they're looking at. I think Page High School is not irrigated at the present time, but these are those fields, and those fields are getting just a lot of use over there. Is that my understanding? I've misquoted something here.
No, you said it right. We used as our model Granny White and Cheek Park because they're currently used for softball by Brentwood High and by Franklin High, and they evidently irrigate those softball fields. So in order to be equitable across the district, we decided that we needed to also irrigate the other softball fields. Ravenwood indicates that they also have an irrigated softball field currently. So I can't, I don't know about softball field irrigation, I can't really speak to that with any kind of authority, but what the effort was, was to equalize things across the county. There's Mr. Hood, he can speak with authority about softball field irrigation. I was looking for you, Mr. Hood.
Let him tell me why you need to irrigate a field that's not used, except up till middle of May.
Mr. Chairman? The reason, Cheek Park, I heard the part about Cheek Park, is that is a county park that is used year-round by the girls' softball associations, and Franklin High School plays at a county park. So it is used extensively. And I, sorry, Mr. Lynch, I didn't hear what field you were talking about, but I can tell you that Cheek Park is used year-round.
I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about one I go by every day and it's not used during the summer.
And did you identify that? I didn't know what.
Page High School.
Yes, sir, I don't know about that. We don't play on Page girls' softball during the summer, but we do use the baseball field.
The baseball field is used, I agree with that.
Yes, sir. Right now, I don't know, I know only during tournament times is Page used during the summertime, but I don't know if there's a weekly program or a daily program like there is at Cheek Park.
They won't even let you practice up there.
Did you get your question answered, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, any other, let's see, moving around here, Commissioner Green?
Yes, in response to Commissioner Davis's amendment in quotes, the Budget Committee did look at those low-cost, supposedly low-cost, we did. Because they were not identified, we didn't know specifically, but the question was brought up is to how we could fund this through a bond, by structuring that bond to pay off those low-cost items early on in the bond life, so we weren't paying for it for twenty years. You know, David, if anybody has any question about that, David, I'm sure would be glad to answer that. But he has a question, but we looked at that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
As to softball fields, I don't know about Page, but I know at Fairview High School, our field's used after May. We have several travel ball teams, and also Parks and Rec help with lights, and there are several coaches that use our field at night, and they do practice on our field all the time, Mr. Lynch. So they, you know, in the summertime, if you're doing the fescue or whatever without the irrigation, those outfield's get really bad.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's pretty much what I was going to say. A lot of these fields are not used because they can't take, they can't take the abuse in the middle of the summer. If, you know, those that are irrigated are usually where these teams migrate to, or try to, because they can recover. I would encourage each commissioner, if you get a chance, to look at this model that they've put together for these athletic funds, it's something that's been put together over a period of years, and I think the equity in it will really please each of you, I think, when you see what, where they're headed, it'll really please you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ford?
Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Fortney if, since this is the new standard that we're going to look at all high schools to go to, the athletic facilities that they should have, will we be including this minimum level of standards in the design and in the pricing, the base pricing for all the high schools that we're seeing from this point forward?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ford, also, to answer your question, we have never included irrigation in any of our new projects, like Independence and Ravenwood, in the initial project, other than the main football soccer field, or the multipurpose field. Since that time, and since we've run into some of the difficulties that we've run into, we would like to, if this goes through, we would like to be able to do this with all of our schools, so any new high schools that come online after this, we will provide the same facilities that we have at our other schools. In other words, we're trying to get everything up to an equitable basis, to where if, you know, we get the question a lot, Centennial has this, but Fairview may not, or Page has this, and Independence may not, or whatever the case may be. So we're just trying to bring everybody up to the same playing field, so to speak, and include that in new.
I understand your intent of this.
In new schools, it would all be included in a new school.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cook?
My question is, why are you using city-owned and funded parks as your benchmark for the high school fields?
I don't believe we're using the city-owned and the county-owned parks as the benchmark.
Well, you just said Cheek Park and Granny White Park.
That was because of the fact that they're using those parks, and we're adding to the wear and tear on those fields. So for them to be able to maintain them, and the standard that we need to have the fields for our people to play on them, they irrigate them, and they maintain them to a higher degree than what we've been maintaining ours. Does that make sense?
We looked at the athletic facilities that students have wherever they go to school, and we, our goal was to have safe athletic facilities for every student, every high school student in the district, and equitable facilities. Now, you know, it would be nice if we had enough property on every high school to build our own playing surfaces, but we don't. So we use some city facilities because they let us do that, and because they're available, and it keeps us from buying property and building additional facilities on the high schools. But if those facilities had the irrigation, such as Granny White Park and Cheek Park, then that meant, in order for our playing surfaces to be equitable at our schools for those students in those schools, then we needed that irrigation. It also does prolong the life of all of our fields. So it wasn't that we use city parks as our model, it is that in some cases, our athletic playing surfaces were in city parks. Does that explain it?
I guess so.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, call for the question.
Second.
All in favor, call the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question being called for, so we'll vote. Resolution 306-4, with the notes made on the changing of the title of resolution, if you in favor of this resolution, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Does everybody voted that wished to vote? Court of vote please?
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number 306-5. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Ag Expo Park budget by $35,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Lynch, the second. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, Commissioner Green?
Well, this is to, the concession stand at the egg park, the State Department of Health determined that we need to heat and air condition the food preparation concession area, which is on the right end, as you walk into the, into the egg center. Left end?
Left end.
Thanks. But anyway, but no, most of food preparation is done there, and because of that, and the heat, and what have you, it become necessary that the Health Department says we need to heat and air condition it.
Screen, it's the biggest concession area where the cooking is done, and that's the one, if you come in the front door and you go all the way out, the far-left side, that's there, and this is a requirement the Health Department has asked us to do, to make that safe and a healthy place to eat. Commissioner Hayes, comment?
Chairman, you pretty much said what I was going to say. There isn't a lot of choice that we have if we plan to continue using that special area, because the state has deemed it to be absolutely necessary, and that is very important in our revenue, as well as the other nonprofits that might be using it. So it's, now that we're in the city in that area, the state is inspected, and we've given very little choice.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, does anyone know how many tickets a year is, are sold for the various events that occur out there? How many tickets are sold to the public a year?
Mr. Wallace?
Ballpark figure?
May we ask him to come up, Mr. Chairman?
Senior Wallace, would you come forward, please, and address the chair? Question is, how many, you heard the question, how many tickets are sold on an annual basis?
Mr. Chairman, the Ag Park itself and our staff, we do not sell tickets for any event. That is left up to the, our clients, our show producers that come in there. I can tell you, the biggest one, there was 145,000 sold for the Williamson County Fair, and that was one event.
And I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, so in the run of a year, would it be safe to say it was a quarter of a million?
Easily.
Easily?
Yes.
Has anyone ever considered putting a surcharge on each one of those tickets to air condition that place?
I have not.
I just wanted to ask.
Is that a motion, Mr. Hancock?
No, but yeah, it's, if there's a quarter of a million, three hundred thousand, half million, whatever that number is, I don't, I don't know what the magic number is to air condition that.
It's clearly one of the issues that the fair brought out last year, that consideration needs to be given, because it's, has to work its way through the priority order, but it's a good point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question out of curiosity, was there a change in the state health codes, or is this the first time we've been inspected, or why did this come up now? Just, sorry, no.
Mr. Hewlett? No, there's not been a change. As the facility's gotten older, our equipment has gotten older, it works harder, and our health inspector, very thorough, he has came up to me, and he just said, "It's time, it has to be air-conditioned." We have a chart in there. It goes from, anywhere from ninety-eight to 102 in the summertime.
So we've just seen an increase in the ambient temperature during events that, over what we had in previous years?
I did.
We've had an increase in the ambient temperature that's in there when people are working, as opposed to previous years, so now we've got to heat and air condition it?
No.
Roughly, no? It's the same?
It's just, it's just that Mr. Gordon has, came up to me, said it has to be done. In the years passed, he never said anything much about it. He did complain some about the equipment, about the equipment that overworks and it sweats on the food service tables and things like it. You have to clean it constantly. So he's came up to me, he wrote it up, said, "We have to have air conditioning in it." And when, this is the first time he's written it up. He has mentioned it.
He just hadn't said anything in the past, and now he's said something about it.
He has said something to me, but he has not written it up.
Ah, gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Hewlett, it's now in the city of Franklin.
Right, I just wanted to see where, if that was where it was coming from, or something else?
Commissioner Hayes, any follow-up?
Just, just to the fact that, to go back to what Brandon was saying, the fact that it is used more means more hamburgers are cooked, more hot dogs are cooked, more pizzas are cooked, and yes, to that degree, the heater is on more.
Resolution 306-5 is up for adoption. Consideration, if you in favor, press your yes button, oppose your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Court of vote please?
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. 306-6. Resolution amending the five-year capital projects budget and appropriating up to $549,000 for highway equipment purchases. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Walton? Highway Commission voted five-four-zero against. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted four-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, Commissioner Green?
This is to, just take, just, these, the equipment is needed to satisfy the increased varied services performed by the Highway Department. All these monies come from privilege tax. That's basically, but it appears, as it says, it's necessary to replace some of that equipment will help the department be more efficient in their operations.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Commissioner Davis?
I still have one question, Mr. Chairman. I'm just wondering about the balance in the privilege tax for the Highway Department. If I've got my figures correct, we're a little short, so we're actually appropriating money that, to be collected later on? Is that what we're doing? Or is that what we should be doing?
Mr. Coleman, if you'd come forward, I think you reported to Budget Committee that by the time this is purchased, would you cover that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the current balance at the end of February was 431,000. We do anticipate by the end of June, which would be the time we'd recover that, that we'd have adequate funds to cover that. It's, it's not unusual that we would prorate over and above that based on anticipated collection, like we're doing our budget. We appropriate. We appropriated July some three, three and a half million dollars into our debt service based on the collections for the previous year.
Thank you, sir. Other questions on Resolution 3066? I see none. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please. Court of vote, please?
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes. Commissioner Cook did not vote.
We didn't get your vote. I'm sorry.
Twenty-one yes. Resolution 3067. Resolution amending the five-year capital improvements project budget to allocate funding for facility improvements at Academy Park. Revenues to come from recreation privilege tax funds. Commissioners Mills and Little? Commissioner Langston, the second. Parks and Recreation Committee, Commissioner Smith?
50 in favor.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, 540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Due to the recent renovations there, including new air conditioning, it's being utilized more. They need additional funds for part-time personnel. And also to provide a new playground for the facility, which is going to be open longer hours in the summertime. It's to, funded to come from the recreational privilege tax.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Little? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, just to add to that, this is being advanced at time prior to the upcoming budget process so that the recreation program can be provided at the beginning of the summer and have full use of the season for the folks that are in walking distance of Academy Park.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cook?
My question is on the previous one. I tried to press my button to vote and I guess I pressed it too soon. So I would like to vote on the previous question. Or have my vote count?
Okay. The rules state that once the chair announces a vote, it's final. But is any objection of correcting the vote include Commissioners Cook in that vote? Any objection? I see none. So Madam Clerk, if you would correct the minutes on Resolution 3066 to read 22 yes, 0 no.
Thank you.
That's right.
Correction, lady. Okay. Let's, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where on the property is the new playground going to be sited? Has that been determined?
Mr. Academy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, ma'am. We're with the help of Mr. Bumpus, who I want to publicly thank. We're taking down the old bleachers that are there. If you're familiar with that, and I know Coach Langston is, and certainly Mr. Williams, we watched a lot of ballgames over there, it was time for them to come down. And we're going to put it right there in that location, twofold. One is because it creates a lot of open space and also because the patrons of the library then with their children could also use that playground, that location. So we, hopefully we picked a good place and it won't be on the playing field. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions on 067? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 3068. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Veteran Services budget by $7,500. Revenues to come from sale of materials and unappropriated county general fund balance. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hullett, the second. Commissioner Smith, Parks and Rec?
50 in favor.
Thank you. Commissioner Green, budget?
Budget Committee voted 440 against.
Explanation, please, sir.
Yes, this is the, at the five points there, the Veterans Park, the Veterans Service Office has been selling memorial bricks to honor those in memory of a veteran. And the proceeds of these sales, of these pavers, the brick pavers, have been received and need to be appropriated to offset the purchase and installation cost of getting those installed by the 2006 Memorial Day service.
If you would make that note because it is our intention to have it as a part of our Veteran Services Memorial Day celebration this year on Memorial Day, so. Commissioner Williams?
That $69 from unappropriated general funds. It seems that somewhere in the back of my memory that Commissioner Moon made a comment at some meeting that he was going to make up the shortcomings that we didn't raise enough, enough, enough money.
That is in the record, Mr. Williams.
I thought that was. So I would, I would move that that $69 be paid by Commissioner Moon.
Other discussion? Go right ahead.
Maybe Commissioner Hullett would want to talk about what we have offered to do.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, we have been working with Commissioner Moon on some landscaping and other improvements to the park that will be structured probably as a gift and kind. We'll get that done. Been a little bit distraction, distracted by imminent little ones right now. So after all that's done, we'll get on that. But, but Mr. Moon and I have been working on his donation, which will be in excess of $69. But he is on the record as that. So thank you, Mr. Williams, for not letting him escape.
We also need to know that you've got.
We, yeah, there are other, there are other funds available.
The bank account that we need to, you know, get that information because we're pulling all this together, so.
And I would also like to point out, Mr. Chairman, this isn't the end of the paver program. This is just, we had to cut off for the ones to get in there by Memorial Day. But that program continues and will continue indefinitely, indefinitely at this point.
Thank you, sir. Other discussion? 3068 is up for adoption. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? If anybody wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 3069. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Parks and Recreation budget by $176,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Green, second. Commissioner Smith, Parks and Recreation Committee report?
50 in favor.
Thank you. Budget?
Budget Committee, 440 against.
Explanation, please?
This resolution is to cover the increased cost of the operation and maintenance at the athletic facilities. And as you can see, it's electricity, natural gas, water and sewer and disposal fees. This is something that's been plaguing every department in the county right now. It burns gas or uses water or heats the buildings or cools them. So this is to make up for those, that shortfall in funds.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lynch?
I can understand electricity and natural gas going up, but why was water and sewer going up and disposal fee?
Can I get Mr. Doug to answer this?
Water and sewer was two reasons, Mr. Lynch. One of them was the new soccer complex came on and also the building, the tri-un, where we picked up some things, it just cost us doing business. We haven't spent on anything else. This is what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Hullett answered the question for me.
Any other questions? 3069 is up for consideration. In favor, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please. Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-two yes.
Twenty-two yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. 30612. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Solid Waste Landfill budget by $250,000. Revenue to come from unrestricted net assets. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lynch, the second. Municipal Solid Waste Board?
340 against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 440 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes. Tennessee Department of Transportation has sent word that beginning in spring of this year, they're going to be starting work again on the, well, on the 840 road, the state route 840 adjoining the landfill. They have offered us as much as up to 600,000 cubic feet of excess soil. And they will load it for us, but we do have to, have to be able to take care of it. Now, if you've bought any soil lately, you know that that could be worth up to a million dollars for us. And it would be to our advantage certainly to have it for our closure and for our landfill fills. So Lewis and the Solid Waste Department need to have your permission to rent the equipment needed to make this happen. It will be much more cost-effective to rent this equipment than it would be to purchase it or to have to maintain it because after this point, we would not permanently need it. Lewis is here and he's ready to address this, Mr. Chairman, if there's anyone that would like to hear anything further.
Commissioner Hayes, this includes the equipment as well, as well as the operators, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Any discussion, questions on 3612? See none? All in favor of Resolution 30612? Press the yes button. Opposed or no button? Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 3614. Resolution appropriating and amending 2005-6 Library budget by $6,500. The purchase of computer equipment and softwares, software revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Langston? Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, 440 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a grant from the state of Tennessee for computer equipment and software. It's a matching grant. We had previously budgeted for our share of this grant. So this is a, no new funds, it's money from a state grant.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. In favor of resolution, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? If everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please. Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 30615. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Solid Waste Convenience Center budget by $22,000. Revenue to come from grant funds. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Wilson? Municipal Solid Waste Board?
340 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 440 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
All of you who know about our convenience centers know that there are buck oil drums in each one. They are showing some wear, they're needing some facelifts, and they have not been as good as we wish they would be. We have found that we have some, a grant money available that we need to use and we can start replacing and make these much improved at our convenience center. There is no local matching money available or necessary for this grant. And we'd ask for your approval. And then hopefully we can continue to make sure that every convenience center gets the new improved model. Keep in mind, anything of the vegetable nature can also be put in the oil drum. So if you have, if you have a big vegetable oil fish fry, that can go in that oil drum too. And that's something we're finding out a lot of people don't know.
Thank you very much. Questions? Commissioner Hayes? I see none. 30615 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 30616. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Highway Department budget by an amount not to exceed $15,000. Revenue to come from unappropriated highway funds. Commissioners Hayes and Lynch?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Highway Commission report, 540 against. Budget Committee?
Four, I'm sorry. 440 against.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners Hayes and Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, members of this committee, I apologize for the late file resolution, but we thought we were going to get a state grant to put this light up. What it is out there, they've done a lot of work out there, the Highway Department, and I want to commend them for that. But there's still, the people, the way that the land lays out there, the people still run that stop sign a great deal. And of course, the lady was killed out there. And we were hoping, putting the lights up, it would solve that problem. At least help the problem a great deal.
Commissioner Hayes?
As Mr. Lynch said, the Highway Department and the Highway Commission has been more than, than helpful. They've removed vegetation, they've changed the fence line, they've put signs up on both sides to intersection appearing, to stop aheads. They've put slowing process grids down. They've done everything and the sheriff has been there to monitor. But still, there seems to be a likelihood of pulling out in front of traffic. I had that happen to me. And I do think that we've got to make sure that we give every opportunity to call the attention to this intersection. I do believe that the Highway Commission is going to be looking at criteria for future to make sure that all intersections get all of this care before just saying that every intersection in our county needs a flashing light. But we have tried. I talked to Tennessee Department of Transportation. There was some grant money originally, but that grant money is not available now and is not looking, they're not thinking that it will be available. So we need to make sure that no other accidents happen. If we prevent one accident and certainly another tragic death like we had, then it certainly is going to be more, more than worth our money. Just as the defibrillators we saw tonight saved two. Mr. Lynch was very helpful in acquiring those defibrillators. And we need to do the same thing here. It's a safety issue. We've tried everything. Eddie has been out here, there with his men. And I ask for you to please help. Let's don't let her have, have died in vain. Let's make sure that this is a safety site for flashing light here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Williams?
I fully support what Commissioner Lynch and Commissioner Hayes says. We have been fighting the situation at Sneed Road and Temple Road with the state grant money for a long time. And I understand it's finally been approved and it's figured, the bid's been signed out and it's going to be going in at Sneed Road. And just to put the commission on notice, I think that I'm going to draw, draft a resolution with, and ask Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Hester, Commissioner Brockman, join that the county pay for a red light to go in at Highway 96 and O'Hillborough Road. Because that is a tremendously dangerous intersection there. And I have had more requests for a red light there. And it all gets tied back up to us getting, trying to get a state grant to help fund the, the cost of that. And when the time delays that it takes, one person's life is not worth that. And we fund a lot of things for a lot of different things. Irrigation softball fields, irrigation of baseball fields and so forth. We certainly ought to be able to fund a, a, a red light at a dangerous, dangerous intersection. So I fully support what both commissioners are doing and those other resolutions are going to be in the coming.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion on 30616? I see none. 30616 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed or no button? If anybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 30617. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Election Commission budget by $501,250. Revenue to come from state grant funds, $411,250 and unappropriated county general funds for $90,000. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, 440 against.
Explanation, please, sir.
Yes, the Election Commission presently, as we know, uses electronic voting machines, but they do not meet the requirements of the Help America Vote Act. And as a result of that, we're going to have to replace the electronic voting machines with new ones that do comply. And this is, this is a grant, state grant to allow us to do that. And as you mentioned before, 90,000 of that is not part of the grant. But when we go out for bids on this, if it comes in less than the 90,000 plus, we'll just save $90,000 just depending on a bid. If there's any more questions on it, I'm, I'm sure we have somebody here can explain these new voting machines. They are the new. They are, the new requirements are that, if you've read this in some newspapers or what have you, a lot of machines, some states are requiring a paper trail to allow insurance that they can go back and have a trail, as recount goes. Some of these are optical, and I hate to see us holding up a, people where they block out the little circle and vote, like they did in Mark County, Florida. Chads. But these, these are, if it comes, if we are required to go to a paper trail, these machines will be able to be adapted to the paper trail if necessary.
Any questions on these new machines? Just as a point for the record, Ms. Beard confirmed to the election, to the Budget Committee that the grant from the state is fixed at 411,250, and as Commissioner Green has indicated, if the bids come in less than that, our 90,000 may go away. It also could increase. But the process is, I understand, Mr. Coleman, that these will be bid, and then the bids will be sent back to the Election Commission to make the decision on the machine, correct? So, any questions? Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, these machines are not made in Florida, are they?
Well, the four companies, as I understand it, that will be, there've been four, Ms. Beard, come on forward, because you're the election person, this needs to be coming from you, your report. Tell the commission about the process, the four machines, and what you'll be doing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fellow commissioners. We have been, in your packet, you have a letter that we received from the state of Tennessee.
No, ma'am. They did not get that packet.
The Budget Committee did, I'm sorry. Needless to say, there are four vendors that have been approved by the state of Tennessee. Those four vendors have shown us their equipment, they have entered proposals with the Election Commission, and now it's up to, after the bid process comes through, it's up to the Election Commission to determine and decide which of these four vendors that we will be purchasing from. The machine has got to make sure, as Mr. Green has mentioned, that if in fact this law passes for a paper trail, that these machines have that capability. We will be required to have one ADA voting machine per precinct, and one per early voting site. That will be a machine that a person who is unsighted can vote unassisted. Therefore, these requirements have to be met by August. We are on a deadline, and it's very, it's getting close. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, or at least a month, we'll know where we're going with this purchase.
Any questions, Commissioner Hancock? Any of those made in Florida?
Thank you.
Don't run away. Commissioner Ford?
Ms. Beard, I believe these state grant funds, those are allocated specifically for Williamson County. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if the bids happen to come in under 411,250,000, those funds then can remain with Williamson County, and can be used for upgrades for these, as I understand it. Is that correct?
No, sir, that's not correct. Those funds will go back to the state.
Okay, I understood from somebody else in another Election Commission that those remained with the county, and could then be used for software upgrades, maintenance on those machines.
That's not the way I understand it.
Okay, if you could clarify that for us, I'd appreciate it.
Be glad to.
Commissioner Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And kind of to piggyback on what Commissioner Ford said, that, and I'm not privy to the price of these machines, but if, maybe if we could bid them, because I feel like there will be a requirement coming down soon for a paper trail, and I don't know if, I know you told us in budget that they could come conceivably, conceivably come in under 411,000. Could we be, could we bid them with and without the paper trail? And if there's money in here, possibly go ahead and buy them to be prepared, or have that equipment? I've seen them in your office, so I don't know.
Well, I don't think it'd be practical to bid them without the paper trail. They need to have the capability, if I understand your question.
Well, I was under the impression that's kind of an attachment.
Well, it is.
Okay.
So you want to, so you're suggesting?
Well, I was just thinking, if we could bid them with and without the attachment, I don't know how much the attachment would be, or how much more it would do. I just, I just feel like it'll come back.
Well, it possibly would, but of course, the funding that we'll get from the state is a one-time amount. And so therefore, you know, if we have to bid them, bid, pay for the attachment later, then the county's going to have to bear the cost.
Right, but it's, my question is, is if we bid it now with the attachment, is there a possibility it would come in under the 501,000?
We would hope so.
With the attachment. So that's what I'm saying, we might go ahead and buy it now.
Right, right, okay.
Ms. Beard, would you clarify a point, because listening to previous discussions before the other committees, has the state of Tennessee approved a paper trail ballot machine?
No, sir, they have not.
So you reported, I thought, to one of the committees that until it's approved, you're not authorized to purchase it.
Exactly right.
So in answer to Commissioner Walton's question, you can't do that?
Exactly, I'm sorry.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we're?
On the same page.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Commissioner, anything else, Commissioner Walton?
No, sir.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Beard, are we required to take the lowest bid, or are we able to look at other criteria in terms of the design of the voting machines?
We will look at the criteria that's specified for Williamson County.
The logical design that voters can use in a simple way.
That's true. We have to realize also, though, that with this new equipment, it's going to require quite a bit of education, not only for us new people getting the machines for our county voters. So that's going to be part of our funding for this equipment, thank you.
Commissioner Moon?
Ms. Beard, will these machines be ready for the county primary?
No, sir, they will not be ready for the county primary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
This is just more of a statement than it is a question. It appears to me that we go publicly as a legislative body and say we're willing to pay a half million dollars for something like this, and then send it out for bids, that we're sort of bidding against ourselves, instead of putting that and letting the bid come in first, as opposed to saying what we're willing to pay. Now, I may be totally wrong in the process, but it appears that it defeats the purpose of putting out what they can actually be bought at. Now, it's one thing as we have a state grant, but it's another thing, you said, okay, we're in addition to that, we're estimating that it's going to be a little over half a million dollars. And that's, I said, that's more of a statement than it is a question.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Just a question, does this Help America Vote Act, do you know if it was funded by the federal government down to the state, and then the state down to us?
Yes.
You know, are they all mandates, and then we here at Williamson County end up with $90,000 bill? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is it all mandated?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything else from Ms. Beard? See none? 306-17 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button, opposed or no button? Everybody voted to wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-one, yes, one abstained.
Twenty-one, yes, and Commissioner Williams abstained. Just twenty-one, yes, one abstention. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 306-10, resolution, excuse me, 18. Resolution 306-18, resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-06 library budget by $35,399.96. Revenue to come from miscellaneous donations. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Langston. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee did not hear this.
Okay. Commissioner Barnwell, explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a money, the cities, cities provide money every year, the cities of Franklin, Owensville, and Fairview to purchase books by the library, and also the friends of the library donate money for purchase of books. This is no county money, this is all donations to purchase books for our library system.
Any questions of Commissioner Barnwell on this resolution 306-18? Are we loaded, Linda?
No, just give it a second, please.
And as Commissioner Lynch said, I'd like to apologize for the late filing of this resolution, but it came to my attention last week.
306-18 is on the machine. If you're in favor, press the yes button, opposed or no button? Everybody voted to wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you, resolution 22, yes, unanimously adopted. Resolution number 306-10, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the city of Franklin for use of Philstone Park. Commissioner Green?
Vote for approval.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, four four zero against.
Parks and Rec?
Five zero in favor.
Thank you, explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is to allow the Williamson County Parks and Recreation Department to renew the lease to use Philstone property for softball programs and other lawful activities.
Lawful activities?
It's what it says.
Lawful activities, okay. Any questions of Commissioner Green on 306-10? For authorizing lawful activities? All, it's on the machine, 306-10. If you're in favor, press the yes button, opposed or no button? Everybody voted to wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 306-11, resolution to approve acceptance of an easement with Vulcan Materials Company for the construction and maintenance of a right-of-way for ingress and egress. Commissioner Little? Commissioner Langston, the second. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, four four zero against.
Thank you, explanation, Commissioner Little?
I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
This, this resolution is coming from the 911 Board, as you can see here, for purposes of building a new tower to operate and put our telecommunications towers and receivers on that. And this, this easement is necessary to accomplish that purpose. Any questions on 306-11? Commissioner Williams?
This tower is just to be used for our own 911, 911.
It's to be, Bill, would you come forward and explain what's going on the tower, please? Ms. Bill Jorgensen?
Mr. Chairman, this tower is actually being paid for with grant, Homeland Security Grant money, and will hopefully be a joint venture between the city of Franklin, Williamson County, and also there could be third parties on the tower too, such as state of Tennessee or city of Nashville. But it's mainly for Williamson County and the city of Franklin to use.
But is there going to be Verizon, or Singular, or any of that stuff on the tower?
No. It's for public safety use.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Bill. Do we have another, do we have another tower in the county that serves this function already?
The county owns, actually, they own one tower out at the landfill, it's a very small tower. Right now, the county and the city share a tower on Incinerator Road, which is right on the other side of the Vulcan pit. And it's a 330-foot tower, it's high maintenance, it's in need of, it's in need of actually $60,000 worth of work, according to the city of Franklin, from one of their vendors. We can actually erect a new tower for $51,000, 180-foot tower, non-lighted, less maintenance, and cheaper to put equipment on.
So this tower will really serve us what that tower has been providing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? See none. Resolution 306-11 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button, opposed or no button? Everybody voted to wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you, resolution unanimously adopted. Other comments before we adjourn? Yes, Mr. Hancock?
I don't know whether it's the new chairs, or whether it's just the upcoming election, but there was not a single no vote tonight. I just thought I'd throw that out there, maybe the chairs.
I'm glad you mentioned it. We don't meet in April, so we'll, our next session will be after May 2nd, so good luck, good luck to everyone. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Unanimous adjournment.